So I'll call the town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting to order first item is roll call.
Oh, can you mute? Yeah, thank you.
We don't see hell.
Oh, I was just promoting Megan so she'll do her presentation. So he's here.
So we got hell said here.
Here.
They're present.
Michael Kenny.
Here.
So Southern.
Here.
We have Kevin football.
Here.
And well, Steve. So Steve is us. And we have all of our own. So I'll promote Kevin to sit for Steve tonight.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So if Steve comes, then he returns to the seat?
That's right.
Yes.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Three stories of four.
Hmm.
No, hell's here.
Oh, hell's here.
I keep forgetting. Yeah, yeah. I'm not used to hell being up there.
Yeah, no.
Don't forget me.
We have two.
Yeah, sorry, hell.
There's no person. Three attendees. Okay, nope. Next item we have is approval of minutes. We have the September tenth minutes. I'll accept a motion for approval.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and second. Does anyone have any corrections?
I do not.
Nope.
Hold on.
I have. I had just a couple of minor editorial issues on page four under subsections. I Colonel Edgirdes states, I would think we could delete that staff requested sentence because
I agree.
Because it's not, it didn't affect anything. It just makes it easier to read it. And on the bottom of that section, it says, staff reported a subdivision modification application. Well, be received. So could we add or add a little bit to say what's
Sure.
Uh, why that's or what it's for? Because it's just limited.
Yep.
Just so it's clear. And then the very last paragraph on that age. The description part on the middle, middle line. Uh, I thought it would make more sense where we said these, where we had home in the Eastwood Mobile Home Park. Since the next sentence, Mayor Franco, I think we should insert the word had invited. Hmm. Now, it's just so it made. That's all I had. Does anyone have anything else?
Yep.
So we'll vote on approval of the minutes of September tenth meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 So it's asked you. Next item we have is site plans. S I T twenty four zero zero eleven. Then okay. Have the applicant wants to describe what they want us to look at tonight.
All right. For the record, my name's Megan Hope. I'm an attorney with Altrin Pearson and Glastonbury. Um, I'm here tonight to present uh the site plan application that we filed for uh seven seventy one Long Hill Road. I'm going to um share my screen because I do have a PowerPoint. Make sure that that's ready. Yep. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Uh, I am representing uh the car wash center Groton. Uh, my client, uh, Frank Carpino and Jim Porter are here tonight. They've have uh over thirty years of experience in the car washing industry. So if you have any technical questions or operational questions, they definitely can um come up and answer any questions. The site um is located in the MTC zoning district. I already mentioned the address at seven seventy one Long Hill Road um along the state uh road route US one A. Um, in addition to hearing from myself tonight, I also have with me Scott Nolan. He's our professional engineer from SLR. We do have our professional traffic engineer, Dave Sullivan, who's here as well. Um, and our architect, Mark Joyce. I'm hoping he's one of those attendees. Okay, perfect. He's also on the line as well, and we'll um go over the architectural plans that we've submitted with this application. Okay, just to um orient everyone, I've put an aerial view of the surrounding area of the site on the screen. Highlighted in yellow is uh is the site. It's a little over an acre in size, located um on that westerly side of Long Hill Road. Um, sort of mid uh mid block between um the two signalized intersections. Um, Draznick Drive, did I get that right?
No.
No, okay. Jurassic, okay. I was like, went over that a lot, so I knew you guys would correct me. Um, and also Quonic Road uh further uh to the south. So we're right in the middle. Um, surrounding us uh to both the north and the south and the east is commercial development. Obviously, we have the mattress firm. Uh, that's the lot that's uh directly to the to the north here. And then we have a multi-tenant building um further to the south here. Obviously, those railroad tracks um above us to the wester westerly side of the site. This is an existing conditions aerial photo. Uh, as you can see, we do have an existing building. That's the uh the smoke shop that's currently there. Um, the building was built um in the fifties. It's about uh seventy eight hundred square feet. We have a lot of impervious currently on site. It's about eighty seven percent or so impervious or sparking pretty much all around um the building. There's a little bit of existing vegetation that's located back towards the railroad tracks, but other than that, the site's either building or pavement. Um, we do have wetlands that are right at the bottom of the slope here on the westerly side of the site. The upland review area extends to this point here about halfway or a third um into the site. We did go to the wetlands commission and get a permit um at the end of June, so they've reviewed um all of our plans for the work uh within the upland review area. Uh, we don't have any direct disturbance to the wetlands, and we did do, as you'll see, uh later, we did do a nice landscaping plan to the back, some native wetlands plantings that the commission had asked for. I think um the rendered site plan which you have on your screen shows, if I sort of toggle back and forth, we've, we've really increased um the pervious area located um on the site plan. We're, we're going down to about sixty cent sixty seven percent impervious or sixty six percent. So we've been able to sort of greatly increase or reduce the blacktop that's currently on site um based on our proposed site plan. So what we are proposing to construct is um a vehicle washing facility, a car wash. It is a permitted use in this uh zoning district. The proposed building is a little over four thousand square feet. That's what's uh the sort of tan color located in the middle um middle of the site plan. Um, and you obviously can see that we've, we've done a lot of, um, I think, site planning enhancements. Um, and really, we developed those based on the intent section that's at the beginning of your MTC zoning district. So there obviously is a, an emphasis in this zone to increase uh pedestrian connectivity and make those pedestrians feel so uh more safe than they currently do. So we are increasing uh the width of all the sidewalks along the road. Um, those are going to uh ten feet in width. Um, we've also added stamped concrete portions for those areas where um a pedestrian might be crossing a drive aisle as well. So that's been incorporated into the plans. We've got much more green space and landscaping located uh closer to the street and also throughout the site, but definitely we have that street tree presence and some of those other things um that are within your zoning regulation. And then I think you can see from our plan, um even though we obviously are car oriented because we are a car wash, we do have um uh pedestrian connections throughout the sites. You're already able to walk from the main sidewalk uh right to the front door of the facility, and then there are sidewalks um around the buildings uh for customers and employees, but it's uh definitely, I think, more inviting uh than the site currently is um right now. I did want to point out a couple of other items. We do have an existing right of way that straddles our property line with the building uh to the north, which is the mattress firm up here. So um the property line uh goes right here. So uh this is their side of the property and our side is below. It's twelve and a half feet on each side, so twenty five feet total. Uh, we have the right to go onto their property, um and they have the right to go into our property. It was originally um put on the land records in nineteen fifty seven and has remained there um uh since that time, still is uh an encumbrance that was on our property and remains on on seven fifty seven um as well. Uh, we are proposing to add a curb cut to the site here, and I have some slides after this that are go gonna go into a little bit more detail, but we do have um a site access here um from the road. There is a island that we are proposing to install here to create separation distance between this existing access point here, and then all of our traffic is going to enter through this main point. We'll go through the pay stations here, circle around um the site, enter the car wash at its rear. It is a single uh tunnel facility. The cars will go through, exit at the front, and then at that point, they can either choose to leave, but typically uh most customers go into the vacuum spaces, which are going to be located um to the south part of the building. We do have a bypass lane that'll bring you around uh to the trash, or if you're just going to vacuum your car, you can use um use that as well. So I wanted to uh just dig into a little bit of the chronology of how we got to the site plan before I hand it over to the engineer. He can go through some of the the technical um components, but as I mentioned, we do have this existing right of way. This is the survey for our site, that existing smoke shop building is here. The yellow dash line at the top of the screen is the property line, and we have twelve and a half feet to the north on the a butter's property and twelve and a half feet to the south. And very limited language in the nineteen fifty seven document. Basically, it's two sentences saying that both properties need to maintain this this uh right away from the street to the railroad, and that's all it really says. No, nothing else. Some additional language probably would have been helpful, but um it is what it is. So when we started uh with this plan process, we really had um multiple iterations of site plans when it came to how cars were going to access the site um from Long Hill Road, and um we filed this application on June tenth. Prior to that, um, the applicant Frank Carpino had reached out to the butter to the north to um talk to them about what we were proposing to do. Um, he, the butter to the north did have questions about site circulation, uh what was going to happen during construction, um how how would his exiting traffic be um be impacted? So we had proposed originally to take this shared of access point, which right now today has an in arrow and an out arrow. We had proposed to make both of those in sort of streamline the access to both of the sites. Um, from our perspective, we felt like it made sense to kind of streamline the traffic movements in that area, and the mattress firm also has another curb cut to the north where they can have people come in or come out. Um, so we had originally um gone with this option, which has uh basically in only at that northern curb cut. Um, we did, after filing with P and Z, submit our plans to DOT because we do need an encroachment permit for this application based on um sidewalk improvements and other things we're doing in the front there. Um, while we waited for DOT to get back to us, we met with Deb and uh she wanted us to get uh a consent from the property owner to the north um about this proposed change in direction. Um, so we did uh start having communications with him, and Frank was going back and forth with the property owner to the north. Um, we finally did get some information about a month later from DOT. Um, they wanted some additional information on drainage. That's when most of their comments were were from and some additional um information on the shared access drive. We continued talking with the property owner to the north, and on August thirteenth, he sent us an email saying he can't approve or consent to change any, any access part of that existing um easement. He said, um, they feel that the change would never negatively impact the value of our property for future redevelopment. Um, so once we received that email, we resubmitted our plan to DOT where we left the easement as is. We weren't going to change it at all. Um, we were going to leave the 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 top access drive as it is now, which is in and the southerly one out. So we submitted that plan on August fifteenth back to DOT. Um, on the twelfth, so almost about a month later, we got a SLR got a call from DOT, and they said, you either need to um have that northern entrance, which we share with the butter to the north. That needs to be shared, needs to be entrance only one way, and the neighbor needs to consent, or you need to slide your access point further south. Um, and they wanted us to really separate those two points of entry with an island. Um, so we did, because we knew we didn't have the owner's consent to change the right of way, we resubmitted the plan to DOT, and that's what you're seeing um at the bottom of the screen here. So it leaves the right of way the way it is, but adds in a landscape island. Um, and it's about twenty four feet or so in width um to really help define those uh driveways, which are um obviously close to each other. So we resubmitted that to DOT on the thirteenth of September, and we got um comments back from uh Rick Chapman at DOT just last week on the eighteenth. He um wants us, he he indicated that their goal here is to really separate the entrance point. So obviously, uh this entry point here, he wants it separated from here. So he wanted us to look at even potentially elongating this island a little bit more so that cars couldn't come in through the the mattress firm side and and sort of zigzag over to get into the pay station. So that was the latest comment we had had through DOT, through DOT, but um the plans we resubmitted on the seventeenth really had all those those comments in there. So I wanted to sort of go through that chronology, um just so you can understand that we we did try to work with the neighbor. Um, he's, you know, I think just hesitant to really change things because he likes how it is now. Um, so once we talked with DOT and got their options, we we really only have one option, and that's to add this sort of like pork chop island here um to the site plan. From our perspective, it works as far as queuing and things like that. From an operational standpoint, it's, it's fine with us. Um, but that's, that's where we landed with that. So I just wanted to sort of go through that because internally, we've been going back and forth for a couple of months, and it obviously is hard when we give something to DOT, and then they don't get back to us for four weeks, but it is what it is. So we we have had quite a bit of communication with them since we filed um in June, so that I think has been helpful, so that we at least know, you know, before this commission votes, at least where their position is um on that entrance point. So with that, I'm going to turn it over or turn it, yeah, turn it over to Scott, our our engineer, so he can go through some of the more technical um parts of the presentation. It's a little precarious.
So much. Thank you, Meg, for teeing me up. Um, for the record, my name's Scott Nolan, a licensed professional engineer in Connecticut, uh license number three, five, eight, eight, one. Um, I'm going to be representing more of the site civil component. Um, my colleague, Dave, is also from SLR. He will be talking more about the traffic stuff. Um, so uh as Meg had mentioned, we were uh in front of the wetlands back in in May. Um, on the twenty second, um I was here um doing my presentation. Uh, basically, um, yeah, the, I think the the concepts do a pretty good job at illustrating our reduction in the uh impervious uh percentage, impervious coverage. Um, but I did want to kind of indicate um that with with that, we're also not increasing any sort of watershed to either the Route One uh DOT owned uh drainage system or the uh wetland system in the back. So uh there's no increase in uh area or watershed to either uh in the front of the property or the rear. Um, this is a redevelopment site, so uh we're required to accommodate for fifty percent of the water quality volume, which we're satisfying using the uh the rain gardens there. Um, we, yeah, no direct wetland impacts. We're not encroaching any further uh into the wetlands than the parking lot currently uh goes in the back there. Um, so we were able to get wetlands approval. Um, I've been in coordination with with Deb as well as the uh fire marshal um and Dwayne and Caesar over in Groton Utilities. Um, I did get the Groton Utilities approval uh today. Um, so that that was good. We're now satisfying um all of their comments, which um I think were outstanding after uh the last uh planning review, internal review. Um, so so that's all set. Um, the latest fire marshal comments were pretty administrative. Um, we're, you know, we're going to add like a another uh fire lane sign there on the uh on the south side. There's a little little uh strip of a uh no parking fire lane um striping there. So he just wanted to sign there, and he wanted us to remove the uh double arrows uh version of the sign, which is uh totally fine. So uh those are, you know, we're in agreeance with those changes, and um we'll definitely be looping him in as well with any increase to the island size to make sure that doesn't uh impact anything. Um, he, I think the, a big thing he wants is just to make sure he has clearance near the mattress firm building. Um, but we feel pretty strongly we can accommodate that. So um besides that, um, as Meg had touched upon, we're in the MTC zone. We're meeting all of the requirements for landscaping and sidewalks. I'm definitely making this um, you know, vehicle dependent use a uh friendly for non-vehicle uh transportation such as pedestrians, and we have the bike racks to accommodate for uh any employees that might be riding their bikes to work. Um, and yeah, we believe that we are um satisfying um, you know, all of the requirements on a site civil level at this point, and we'll work with the uh public works to uh address those comments that came through, which I'm not sure you guys have seen. Um, but one of, one of them did touch on the impervious number because we've been kind of jumping around in our in our concepts. Um, we did run a another uh computation of the impervious, and we actually fell even below the uh previous concept where we were coming in from the shared access drive. That island actually ended up gaining us some more pervious area. So before we had uh thirty two thousand square feet, which was about sixty seven percent, and we're actually down another five hundred square feet. Um, with that island growing to potentially block off a little bit more, it's only going to add some more pervious. So um we're actually lower than the number than um of uh impervious surface than what was approved before from wetlands. So this actually does pick up a little bit more green space. Um, with that said, um, I believe I'm going to hand it over to uh to Dave to talk more about the traffic. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Scott. Again, my name is David Sullivan. I manage the traffic and transportation uh group for SLR. I'm a professional engineer. I won't tell you my number, but it's uh much lower than Scott's. Leave it at that. Um, let me uh, I gotta.
Yeah. There you go. One more. There.
Here we go. Um, so what I'd like to do is is take you quickly through the 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 study, um how we conduct the study, some of our major findings, and then lastly, talk a little bit about the site itself and circulation. Um, uh, the traffic study is fairly traditional. Um, what we do in in a case like this is we want to review the existing conditions. Uh, we look at things like um uh crash information along the site frontage. Uh, we look at existing traffic counts. We did new traffic counts. Um, in this particular case, we looked at afternoon peak hour, and we looked at Saturday midday peak hour, which are uh traditionally might be uh two of the busier times uh for car washes. Um, we look at the access, which uh Megan has given you uh uh a lot of information on that, but um each time we change the access, we have to go through a whole nother uh set of evaluations to make sure it meets the criteria of safety and uh geometry. Um, we evaluate sight lines. Uh, in this particular case, I'll talk about that in a minute, but it's on a relatively straight stretch of road. So the uh ultimate location of the the access point uh really doesn't matter along the whole frontage. Uh, then we do a traffic impact analysis, which is looking at conditions before and after. Um, the project would come to fruition, and then uh we go through uh what would be our recommendations in this particular um site. There we go. It's on here. Ah, no. There we go. Um, this is some of the key findings from the report. Um, so I'll go through these. The first thing is how much traffic we estimate will be generated um by the uh car wash. Um, and we used a couple of sources here. Um, we use, initially, we look at the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh because they have uh statistics for uh tons and tons of land uses. They do have information on car washes, um but the Saturday data in particular was a little bit sparse, and we we've known that uh over the years, and we've collected independent car wash data. So our estimates are are kind of a combination of the two, where we looked at the industry data and then looked at real life data um in Connecticut for car washes that we've um evaluated. And what we uh determined is that uh on a um a typical day during uh during the peak in the afternoon, you might get forty car washes or eighty trips, forty cars in, forty cars out. Um, Saturdays tend to be busier. Um, in general, they're about fifty percent busier. Um, so we estimate that there would be sixty in, sixty out, or a hundred and twenty um vehicle trips. Um, the next line shows uh what we call pass by trips. Um, car wash is uh some of them. Um, you leave your house, you go directly there because you want to get your car washed. Other times, you'll get your car washed on the way home from work, or on a Saturday, uh you might have your your honeydew list of the bank and the cleaners, and you get your car washed on the way. Those trips are not new because you're already on the road and you're passing the site, and you're going to go in. So they're new to the driveway, but they're not new to the other intersections in the area. Um, so that's about for car washes, that's about fifty percent of the trips during peak times. Um, and then what we call the net new trips, which are really the ones, those net new trips are the ones that go to the other intersections in our study area, which are the two signalized intersections, and are we impacting those? Now, what do we mean by impacting? Well, we uh first determine what the traffic um um profile would look like without the car wash, and in this particular case, we assumed um that the site was essentially vacant. Um, and we estimated what, we estimate what the traffic conditions would be there. So we put in normal growth. If there were other developments in the area, we would put that traffic on if they were built and not open yet. In this particular case, there was no um other background um traffic uh that needed to be added. Um, so that's uh what we call our background or no build conditions. Um, we then take the estimates of the site traffic, and we say, well, how many lefts and how many rights for these these vehicles coming in and out of the driveways? Um, we determine that, and um um then, once we have um split those left and right, we put them on the traffic, on the uh signalized intersections. So uh on um Draznick and uh Quonic, we have a certain amount of traffic that's being added to those signals. That's called our combined or build. So those traffic volumes. So those traffic volumes are higher. And then we do analysis. We put all this information into a computer model. And it gives us answers in terms of level of service. Levels of service are grades. They go from A, which just like in, on a report card, A is very good. They go to F and F is a failing level of service. They're based on the amount of delay you would encounter at those intersections. So if you were to pull up to an intersection in the middle of a residential neighborhood cul-de-sac, it would be level of service A because you would pull up and pretty much go. Level of service F is something you might experience on a very, very busy intersection where you would pull up to a traffic light, for instance, and maybe you would see that, that, that light go through a full cycle or more. And you'd be sitting there waiting for, you know, a minute, two minutes sometimes. So that's the range. So we did that analysis and what we found is that all of the all, all of the answers, so to speak, were the same. So where we had As remained As, where we had Bs remained Bs, where we had whatever the level of service is today at those traffic lights would be the same level of service after the car wash. So from the terms of the operations, we found that there would be no impact to any of those levels of service. At the driveways, entering would be level of service A. So essentially, you, you pull up, whether you're taking a right turn or left turn, and you would look for a gap and that gap would generally be there within, you know, a dozen or so seconds. The exiting is a little different. Left turns are a little more difficult than right turns. So level of service B, B through D, we calculated for the exiting driveways, which unless we had a significant amount of traffic, that's probably the levels of service you would find for any of the unsignalized driveways in this area. If you're taking a left turn, it's a little more difficult because you have to wait for gaps both, both directions. The next analytical finding was the sightlines and I touched on that. But how we determine that is we look at the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So we're not looking at posted speeds. We're not looking at average speeds. We're looking at the speed that most of the traffic is traveling at or below. So eighty-five percent of the traffic is doing thirty-nine point three miles per hour or less. And DOT says for that eighty-fifth percentile speed, you should be able to see four hundred and thirty-five feet in either direction. And we do meet those criteria. So in summary, the findings are that we don't anticipate that there would be a traffic impact associated with the traffic coming and going here. And that's even taken into account that there would be some traffic generation by the existing use or by some reuse of the seventy-eight hundred square foot building. Nonetheless, this traffic on its own would not impact things and the driveways have safe sightlines and geometry. So with that said, I'd like to talk a minute about the operations. And this is the same sight plane you saw colored up. And we took the color off so we could put a few notes in here. But I'll, I'll start at the tunnel itself. These car wash tunnels at peak capacity, if you had the cars lined up, ready to come in, could, could service or wash a hundred and twenty-five or in extreme cases, a hundred and thirty vehicles. So we, we assumed a hundred and twenty-five vehicles could be processed through the equipment. So what does that tell us? Well, that tells us that if we have a lot less traffic than a hundred and twenty-five coming in and we talked about having sixty during normal peak hours, as long as something isn't stopping them elsewhere in the system, those can easily be processed without much problem. That's just less in than can be actually processed. The next possibility is, well, when you check in and you go to the payment, pay payment kiosks, is there possibly a bottleneck there? And there's three lanes that you could pay in. One is for members. And the members, it takes them typically about thirty seconds. You go in there, you swipe and you can move on to the next movement. So theoretically, if they were lined up back to back, you can get a hundred and twenty vehicles through that, that members lane. The non-members lane, which there's two of, typically takes a minute or two. So you have to pull up, you know, you press the button that you, which car wash you want, you swipe your card and you move, move on. We assume the higher end of that range of two minutes per transaction. So, you know, that, all told, at two minutes per transaction, you can get another sixty vehicles. So overall, we're talking about a hundred and eighty vehicles that can get processed through there. So more than a hundred and twenty-five, so that does not become a bottleneck. So all of this assumes that there's a steady state of, of traffic arriving. We all know that's not the case. Everybody's not sitting back and, okay, one minute went, now it's my turn to enter. So we said, what kind of failsafe do we have here for the normal peaks in the way people drive and arrive places? Well, you can see between the check-in tunnel and the pavement station, we have room to, to queue fifteen cars. In addition, before the pavement station, we can queue another fifteen cars. So clearly, for the day-to-day operations and the peak hours, what we're projecting, that's fine. But then we asked the question to the operator, we said, what is, what's the peak conditions? What's your busiest nearby one that we could, we could kind of compare this to in a model? So the busiest one, which is probably, you know, it's on a road that has, you know, twenty-something thousand cars going by it a day. This only has about fifteen thousand. So it's probably about fifty percent busier than this. And on their busiest day, those sunny days in March, after you, after the snow just melted and everybody's getting their car washed, the largest queue they've seen is about twenty-five vehicles. So right here, we have thirty vehicles for about half, a half to two-thirds of the operation that we are expecting here compared to their busiest facility. So we, we've done a lot of homework on the operations and we're more than comfortable that the, that the operation onsite is not going to spill offsite to create any traffic concerns in that, that particular location. So that, that's, that's the end of my presentation. Be happy to answer questions or dive deeper into any particular issue. Yep, can I have anything else?
I think I'll turn it over to, to Mark. Are you there, Mark?
So do you, is he going to share his screen or is he going to work off of yours?
I was going to ask him. Mark, do you want me to point at you talk?
You are muted now. I'm sorry, I needed to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Very good. I mean, I'm three slides, so I'm, I'm sure you can navigate. You know, so good evening. My name is Mark Joyce. I'm Associate Principal with Phase Zero Design. Happy to talk about the architecture and kind of the, the setup of this building. It's a relatively simple building in terms of its sort of design program. It's, it's a car wash. We're all familiar with car washes. The primary sort of design program element is the car tunnel where you get your car washed. This operation, I think, you're probably familiar in general with it. You do not get out of your car. You stay in your car. And sort of a, essentially a trolley way brings you, brings you through the facility. You put your car in neutral and it, and it'll drag you through. Maybe drag is the wrong terminology. But in addition to the, the wash tunnel, we really have some very simple support spaces. We have an office function for general, for general office and staff. We have a required bathroom. And then we have kind of mechanical support space in terms of the equipment and, and chemical storage and washing solutions and so on. We've kind of modeled this building and kind of the brand on the Newington location. The, the car wash center is sort of settling into, into brand recognition. So we're trying to, you know, repeat a lot of the design elements from location to location. We do understand that we need to hit the design guidelines for, for Groton. We believe we have, kind of given the, given sort of the, the use and function of the building, we don't necessarily fit within kind of a specific mold that's identified in sort of a lot of the design criteria. But some of the things that we can hit is, you know, kind of articulating the facade, giving the facade some interest, some height, some textural, you know, relief and some interest, some material relief and interest, textures and colors and so on, without being sort of over the top with the facade design. But we've, wherever possible or wherever we could functionally create interest in the facade, I believe that we have. We're creating height and hierarchy at the entranceway and obviously signage. In addition to that, where, where introducing a canopy at each of the entrance portals. So very, very simply, someone can identify where, if you are a pedestrian and you had to walk into the facility, you would do that sort of on the right-hand side here. You will clearly identify where your car, where you will navigate your car in and out of the, in and out of the building. The, the site design is really going to inform you how to, you know, navigate your vehicle through and around the, around the property. But we just wanted to accentuate and sort of reinforce kind of what the, what the building, various building functions are and kind of, and do that in massing, in height, in texture, in color. The material palette sort of starts from the, from the ground. We have a masonry. We're, we're looking at either, either sort of a masonry or a, a cast stone base element to ground the building, give it, give it some presence, give it some, you know, some, some substantial base element and try in some sense to lighten the materials up from there. We're looking at doing a, a longboard product or what people might consider a composite wood panel of a, of an earth tone color. The field of the building will be a combination, again, of a composite metal panel and sparingly some ephesus in, in the industry. It's, it's basically a stucco. We've really kind of introduced a lot of glazing that you would sort of not see in a, in kind of a, a typical car wash. That's partially intentional. It's also kind of answering some of the design guidelines. But it also kind of adds some interest and excitement to the building. The, the car wash tunnel is very well lit. It's very bright. You can see what's going on inside. And so to sort of further, you know, give it that brand recognition and what the facility is, we felt that adding as much glazing as, you know, kind of logistically and feasibly possible, we would do. The, this is kind of a good shot. I mean, you'll, you'll, you'll see that we have the pay stations and they're sort of articulated with the, with sort of the swooping roof element to it. We've tried to repeat that onto the building and we did that at the wash tunnel entrance and exit. So as you, as you enter the building, you pass under a canopy. Now granted, it's twelve feet in the air, so it's, it's, it's pretty high for obvious reasons. But, you know, we're trying to tie some of the site elements into the, into the building facade. The entry portals have more of a, a sort of rectilinear or a flat entry. And that's, and that's intentional, again, just to try to create some separation between the, the various functions of the building itself. The, this, this elevation, again, this is really kind of gives you the full, the full length of the wash tunnel. We're looking at articulating kind of the, the front and rear bays, bays of glazing. Try to give the building some motion and some interest. Maybe, you know, sort of reflecting back to a shape of a vehicle as it's passing through the car tunnel. Again, the, the tunnel itself is very bright, so you're going to be able to see what's going on inside. You're going to be able to see the cars passing through there. And, you know, it, it's kind of, it, it's, it's a very animated sort of space on a, on a very busy day. In terms of overall construction, it's essentially a flat roof building. We need to be very sort of concerned about waterproofing, which is kind of ironic. It's not so much waterproofing exterior in, it's more waterproofing ins- inside to out. We want to conceal all of that water that's being used in the wash operation. We want to keep it inside. We want to capture it. We want to, you know, process it, recycle it. So some of the detailing of the building is probably a little bit different than what you would normally see. For instance, we're, we're, we're investigating actually sloping the glazing so that any water that hits it on the inside will drain down properly so that we can capture it and it won't be, won't be sort of puddling in places that we don't want it. So there's like, you know, some, some, some interesting detailing that's going to, going to be associated with the building that you would normally not kind of consider. Other than that, it's, it's like I say, it's a pretty straightforward building. We've tried to inject some good design where possible, where feasible. Again, accentuating the, the brand recognition, you know, as, as we start to launch more locations. That kind of does it for me. If anyone has some specific questions, of course, I'm more than happy to, to answer it, but I'll toss it back to you.
Yep, thanks, Mark. Just have a couple more slides here. We obviously went through it. The wall signs were shown on the elevation and those were sized appropriately in accordance with the regulation. There is an existing sign that's located on our site and we are going to keep that. And we'll get a new panel. So we did provide additional information in one of our supplemental submissions. This lower portion will be removed and the top panel will be replaced on both, both of the sides. We did submit a lighting plan with, with the application. The pole height for the parking lot lights are fourteen feet. The vacuums are all located on this, the south side of the building are those arch sort of vacuums. Those have lights on the underneath mounting height of seven feet. And then there are also wall lights mounted at twelve feet around the building. But with that, that sort of concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions. We did submit a narrative about compliance with the regulation, but we're, you know, we've got the whole team here and we'll answer any questions that the commission has.
Steph.
Thank you. So I, I don't have a full report tonight. As you know, we're not, you're not expected to make a decision. These revisions are fairly new and the creation of a new curb cut needs to be reviewed with Public Works. Yeah, obviously, the, the other, the other proposal to have an own entrance only, shared between mattress firm and the car wash is, is preferable. But given that, that property owner definitely does not want to have any work done on his property, we're, we will review this and try to make it as safe as possible. And so I'll have a full report for you at the next meeting. But again, we don't, the applicant doesn't, and we don't expect you to make a decision tonight, but we're very interested in your input.
All right. And we have an extension.
Yeah, oh yes, exactly. There is an extension that takes us to the next meeting, October eighth.
All right, but we have to act that.
You do have to act that night. That's correct.
All right, so I'll open it up to the commission for any, any questions or comments ahead. I'll start with you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only, the, that right of way to the north. There, are, are we supposed to pay attention to those arrows that are pointing out and in? I, I don't, is that going to be used that right of way?
So word, that right of way is there and we're not touching it. And the way it's used today is that people enter through this northern part and they exit through the southern part. And so we're not touching that, but our cars obviously aren't going to exit this at all because we're, we're headed in the totally different direction.
Yeah, okay, I see that. But I guess it, if you make an, if you get into the queue and then you decide you're not going to do it. Yeah, okay, I see that, but I guess it, if you make an, if you get into the queue and then you decide you're not going to do it. How do you do that?
How do you get out? Yeah, so if you're, you're in the queue here and you want to, I guess, go around bypass, that you'd use the bypass lane, so you would.
Oh, so that's, and that's that right of way?
Correct.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, that wasn't my only question, that was my only question regarding that, you've explained it clearly. The wastewater is all contained within the building and it's cleaned and reused?
You want to come up, Frank?
Sure.
Just say your name.
My name is Frank Carpi, I'm one of the owners. The, all the wastewater is stored in what we call reclaim tanks. There's three 2,000 gallon tanks. That will process all the water in the car wash before it goes to the oil water separator.
Okay.
And those tanks we draw off and filter and clean that water, reintroduce it back into the car wash.
Okay. What is the posted speed limit on that road? You'd said it was 39.3 was how fast cars are actually going, but. Thirty, and if cars did go thirty, would that change your calculations?
Make the sight lines even better. And it would change the operating conditions.
Yeah, I didn't think so, I thought, I imagined that the sight lines would improve. Cause, okay, that's it, those were my questions. Thank you.
So, do you?
Yes, I do, I'm just trying to understand how this is supposed to work. Quite honestly, I did go over there today and I think I understood last step going there. But there are arrows going, or cars going outside of the car wash, I'm not concerned with those going into it. But the ones going out, and I guess it's sort of that way for the mattress place too, it has an out arrow also. Is the traffic going out of the mattress place going to go either left or right?
Yes, they can do that today, going out of the mattress room, they can go left or right.
Okay, and the ones that are going out of your car wash, then you have the same thing, you can go left or right.
Correct.
But you have it like two separate lanes or something like that?
It's wide, yes, a little bit wider.
So are you going to have the two lanes then, or, or people get to choose, or they're going to be in the middle of this?
They could, they, yeah, so, I'm sorry, my, oh, my computer's back to them. Yeah, so we do have, am I still sharing now? Sorry. So we do have, so in that existing mattress firm right away, he doesn't want us to touch it at all, even he doesn't want us to. Draw an air or anything, okay. For our, our proposed exit, it is wide enough, is it 24 feet Scott, or how? 24 feet, so that would be the width for two, two cars to be next to each other, one going to the right and one going to the left.
And we, we have a stripe for two lanes, so there's a right arrow and a left arrow.
And a straight in the middle.
And a line in between.
Okay, and I, I guess why I don't understand quite honestly, but I'm not a traffic engineer by any stretch. But maybe, I guess, in driving, I don't understand if this was worth, somebody making a left turn out there? That's kind of a challenging street to go out on too. My humble opinion. But, but the, whoever the DOT is going to let you do that, I guess?
Yes, and that's where, when I was describing the levels of service, it's based on the delay. So level of service D is, it's, it's acceptable during peak hours, but you're, you're getting to the point where it's, it's not A and B. Which would be on a sleepy little road, but D is certainly fine. The good thing about this location, and Megan touched on it early, is we're almost smack dab in the middle of the two traffic lights. So if there's anywhere that you're going to have. Not only some gaps created, but you're away from the queues at those traffic lights too. So you, you're kind of on your own and in the best place you could probably be on this stretch of road.
Right, no, I, I kind of noticed that when I was leaving. That lot because I was expecting it to be difficult to even go out in the street. And it was like maybe the lights are set up optimally, they both seem to be working together, so you had a big expense there, you could have gone, I could have gone left very easily. Okay, thank you, that's all the questions, thank you.
Lauren, do you have any questions?
So I do have a question about the island you have in between, I don't know if they can.
Yeah, sorry, can you, if you could let me back in?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, 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 sure.
Just in general, the, the small little island that you're creating between the right of way and mattress firm. Would there be a concern of folks using that just to like hook a U-turn? Just to, to turn around essentially, and how would that impede? Folks queuing or impair traffic at all? Yeah, so if they come in your entrance and then go around that, I think you called it a porchette island? Go around that and then go out mattress firms exit?
That should be knuckle, so they can't do that.
Yeah, and, and, and also there's a lot easier places to turn around. For instance, there's never anybody in mattress firm part, honestly. So you can just pull an air and you could probably do a donut.
About this, this traffic movement here?
Yeah.
And so we did get in that latest round of comments on the 18th from DOT, they're wanting us even elongate this a little bit.
To make it more.
Even, yeah, they wanted to, as, as far as we could sort of separate it. So that people wouldn't, I think, do that movement and discreet more separation distance also, so I think people. Can't be coming in this entrance and then cross over, because if we elongate this a little bit more, you're not going to be able to square your car up enough.
Right.
To get into that last kiosk.
Okay, um, the only other kind of comment question I had, I appreciate the attention to the design standards. My question is more for Deb, if you could maybe educate me a little bit, do we have any design standards for? The signage, it just seems like it might be jarring with all that blue next to the glass and the wood, I don't know if there's any.
We, we know, it's just size that we regulate.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
To our off-site people, Hal, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I suppose I do. And some of it is just an understanding, I, I hear all the engineering and we just kind of went through this with a gas station and I'm getting the feeling that this is. The numbers we're hearing are, in terms of throughput of this is based. On the engineering you mentioned and not on necessarily the market study because we're getting this car wash. Is going to be competing with two other brand new car washes, one has just been completed. So it's, it's not like, I, I understand that there's probably a push to make, getting your car washed. Cooler and trying to increase the amount of people that get their car washed, but we only have so many cars. And this will make the fifth car wash that we actually have here, so it's hard to imagine. That there'll be a tremendous flow here despite the, the queuing of 30 cars. So I'm really not concerned with the numbers so much. Uh, I certainly hate adding yet another curb cut, but DOD is putting it into that position. The elongation of the island, I don't see an issue having people from crossing over. As long as it doesn't mess up your system too much, just because there just won't be that much traffic there. Uh, I do understand the issue with the mattress firm, they've got a parking lot. Entirely unused, but the building has a parking lot in the back and they need to be able to get out of that parking lot. And probably don't want to have to, have to go through your site to do it. Though I don't think we'd mind that happening, but historically, that's why you end up with. Three different directions of traffic happening, and that does concern me a little bit just because. The line striping that you would have, I see you've got what, an eight inch wide stripe? Is all that divides. Your queuing lines with the exiting lines with the inboard lines. Um, I'm, I don't even know what color you paint things to keep track of that, and I, I think I'd rather see something that. Was a, you just certainly want to be able to drive over it. But I think you, I think I'd want to see something more than a painted eight inch white line, which will go away in a year or two after people start driving over it. Something with a texture, something that's uncomfortable to drive over, but doesn't preclude you from driving it over, I think I'd be happier with that. The, a little confusion here is that you have always, maybe I'm lucky at the wrong drawing, but I think that's, I've heard that there's all these arrows over here. Some of them, I imagine, are white painted arrows that will be on the sidewalk, on the paving, and most won't, is that true?
Typically, we would paint the arrows where it's one way. Or if we're doing directional returns. The pavement arrows that would probably go away in this particular case are the two-way arrows on the lower parking lot.
Right.
Um, because if it's two-way, you, you don't need to instruct anybody to do one thing or the other.
Right, and I suppose you don't need them. Going around, well, actually, you don't need them for the queuing lines and you don't need them going around.
No, you.
Most of them, because. Most of you don't.
Yeah, you, you're correct, you, you really don't need those, those either.
Right.
In this particular case, because there's no option other than to go in that direction.
Right, but you would want the one that tells you you can't turn right or left.
Like here?
Yes.
That's correct, yes, so that's. That one will happen, you don't need to have an arrow telling people, yes, you may exit the building. And these are all, I, I didn't really see it all on there, but you were telling us about, this whole development does have vacuum cleaners all along the building?
Yes, those vacuums are all on this south side of the building, they are a little hard to see. In this picture where we've seen those circles, that's the basic vacuums. Off here.
Okay, so. Okay, so it's on both sides, a lot, a lot of vacuums. Um, is it expected that people will come just to use the vacuums?
Percentage, do you think? Do you have a percentage of people who come just to use the vacuum? The clients are saying it's small.
Okay, all right.
Come up here, Jim, so we can hear you, yeah.
Jim Porter, one of the owners, this industry used to be very volume-based, now it's all about members. And so we're looking for members because it's a recurring monthly charge and those are the people that tend to show up, use your vax. So you don't get a lot of people off the street, do you, you do, you get some, and that's why they're free, but it, it's not a large number.
Okay, yes, the, the new one up on Route 12 also has the free vacuums and they make a big fuss about it, so I imagine they're in the same position. In terms of the look of it, I think you're doing a pretty good job, oh, about the lighting. I'm sure it'll be dark sky, I wish, I hope it's more than dark sky and very full cutoff. Well, that, that doesn't tell me anything though, what I need to see is the, the, the lights themselves. Yes, I'm not concerned about splash so much as the direction of glare. Our standards do kind of insist on that. Uh, with that in mind. Uh, you're talking about the inside of your tunnel being brightly lit. And you're kind of showing that off through the windows, which sounds pretty nice, but. About the lighting, if that's the case, then I'd want to see that kind of full cutoff thing also happening inside the tunnel. It would tend to be up higher, but I don't have any specs on that here, so. You're telling me it's brightly lit and it's lots of glass, so we're going to see lots of light. And it's kind of like another opportunity for glare unless it's controlled.
Yeah, I think what Meg is referring to when she says brightly, like, nice and bright, is there's windows on both sides of the tunnel. So there'll be plenty of natural light in the building, so the people in their cars, it won't be like your typical dark. Bloomy tunnel with some lights in it, it's all natural light because of all the glazing we have in the building on both sides.
What kind of lights do you have inside though?
There are LED lights, I can get all the specs on those.
So we can get those specs?
That, that, that's, I'm concerned with the, the nighttime look of it.
Yeah, the tunnels are larger and much more open with natural light, that's what we're, we're shooting.
We get the specs for that.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that sounds, that sounds fine for the natural light inside, but I was thinking about the potential for, despite it being LEDs. This is, this is kind of feeling industrial inside and there's a potential for. Light bulbs in there glaring outwards, which would be great advertising for your place, but not so good for the neighborhood, so. And when we. All right, and the only thing about, I, I, the look of it looks terrific to me, it looks like. How to pass your architecture exam 101 for the most part, so I did, did a fine job there. The odd part about on the south side, south elevation. Where you've got the.
This one?
Yes, that one, with the, the sloping head of the windows, where everything was nicely rectilinear and matched up. And then you did that and I don't know what that has any connection to, it just seems to. It's not, it's not a, 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 that kind of a planning thing, but I'm just mentioning, it's the only thing that kind of sticks out. And not in a good way and I, it doesn't have anything to do with anything and just costs you more money, so I. I don't know what you were going for there.
Was it your idea, Frank?
On the original building, yes.
It was the client's idea, but we're, we're taking your comment, so.
Yeah. I, I'd see where a client might think it's cool, but please advise your client, because. Extra stuff, Austin. Doesn't do it. Um, otherwise I think I'm as okay as I could be about this, so sure. That's mine, that's all it for me.
Thank you.
All right. Kevin, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, because you know Hal has a lot more talent on lighting than I do, but. I like the algorithm side, which I thought actually the traffic study was very well presented. Where I finally understand the inverse relationship of the throughput of the tunnel plus the queues. And in a nearby Dunkin' Donuts, you see that they have a problem with a queue and I believe it's because they only have a single queue. So the only issue I, I didn't quite follow was, if we aggregate the total number of the three kiosks. How many cars can be lined up at one time between all three?
Yeah, we think it's 15.
So 15, okay, so that's fine, that seems to, to, to match it. And a question to staff, the reason we don't have the Groton Utilities approval in our package, it was just completed today, so therefore we, we'll review it on October 8?
That's correct, it did just come through today and it literally was just approved by Groton Utilities Water.
Yes.
Got it, okay, and. Is there a projected start time or start date for the construction and then the opening day? I mean, do you all have those type of projections at this time?
So right now, I mean, obviously this all depends on when we get approved.
Sure.
You know, in a perfect world, we would like to start probably December 1st with taking the building down. Um, we have a tenant that will be moving out, so we have to wait for him. Um, but realistically, if we have a mild winter, we'll probably be opening for the end of next summer, is our thought.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's my only question, thank you.
Okay. I only had a couple items, one was on the traffic study, when you have all these numbers, are they per hour or per day?
Sorry, yeah, they are per hour.
Per hour.
During the peak hour, so on Friday it's the.
No, and you, what are all the numbers you get?
All the numbers are.
Are per hour. Per hour, yeah, as you said. So some of them get, you get a lot of cars through there then, in a day. What are your normal hours for operating?
Seven, eight, seven to nine.
Seven to eight to nine.
Again, the peak hour is the heaviest.
No, no, I under. No, I understand. No, no, I understand that. It's not, not contin, nothing is continuous. Yeah. Um, external lighting on this, what are you doing with that?
Yeah, what are your fixtures look like?
Uh, they're wall pack on the building, it's wall pack units, and then there's a couple.
Poles, yeah, we can get you some cut, I don't think we gave them cut sheets.
We didn't, but we, we have them.
Yeah, I can get you cut sheets for the next meeting to show what the fixtures look like.
And where they, yeah, and where the fixtures go on the.
Yeah.
Not on the building, but on, on the poles.
Yeah, we have that, I have this lighting plan, but maybe Scott, we can color this or something for next time, because this is like hard to read. Yeah, we have that, I have this lighting plan, but maybe Scott, we can color this or something for next time, because this is like hard to read.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we can try and color that, show where the posts are and stuff.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions or from the commission? So we'll adjourn this to next.
Exactly, yeah.
Information on the lighting, for sure, inside, outside. Um I think we're gonna be sent D O T comments, try and give them a a longer island. I hope we'll get comments back from them, but I don't know, at this point, they're averaging like thirty days. Um so anyways, I think we've had a lot of conversations with Greg, so hopefully we can get something from him for the next meeting.
And I've asked for our comments back internally by the end of the week.
Okay.
So we'll put all that together and get it to you as quick as possible.
Great, awesome. Okay.
Alright.
Good, see you in a few weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And I uh noticed I skipped off an agenda item, we didn't have public communications. But you don't have anybody on the public.
We we don't, but I do wanna note letter in your packet, um noting that he will be at the meeting in November to talk about a potential zoning text amendment to allow multi-unit development in the item zone.
No, I wrote that note down. I just went to what I saw was the the work for the night. Yeah, so I don't know if anybody on the commission has anything on communications. And obviously, the public, there's nobody on the screen.
Let's just confirm that, nope, even Shannon.
So it's just people involved in this discussion.
I just had some thoughts even on the initial correspondence, but we should save those for the next.
On the, for Bill Sweeney? Yeah, so that's just he'll be at that meeting.
I thought we should just talk about what we're doing under new business.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So new applications. We have any?
Right, um you you can see we just have two new applications and modification of the Colonel Ledger to State subdivision, which is to eliminate um reconfiguring an intersection that's offsite. Um and then ACE overhead door, which would be a new building at one one five nine Aquanic Road.
Okay, no referrals. And I thought we should talk about the letter that from uh attorney Sweeney. Uh to see what what we really expect uh to do out of this, he uses the term workshop, I I don't like that term here for this.
No, I think he, what we'll do is we'll place that on the agenda, um you know, it'll be
They should just make a presentation.
Exactly what he plans to do.
And we should ask any questions.
Exactly what he.
But no decisions will be made.
That is correct, that is correct, he just wants to be sure that everyone's on the same page before he actually drafts up a text amendment.
Yes, no, I can see what he was striving at.
But how can you know that if we're not voting or anything?
No, no, well, no, but comments, we can give them comments.
Right, I mean, I his approach to it, um and get any input you care to give him.
But there's no decision to be made.
No, I understand that, but I was just curious how there's gonna be any consensus or anything.
Exactly. I think it'll be a lot like how when staff presents um preliminary zoning um amendments, you know, we sort of have a discussion over how we think we're going to handle it, and then we go back and we make changes, um I would expect him to take whatever input he gets and actually draft up. And then at that point, make an application and then the whole formal process starts.
Yeah, but he's the one that would have to determine what to do with the comments. Or questions.
Well, I guess, I guess my, some of my thoughts on this are you know, and this is something I talked about a while ago, I think it's a great but it's also part of a bigger discussion, it's almost a P O C D discussion. And there's also when you, I think what's interesting about this, when you look at the specific parcels that are in that particular zone, it's um quite an interesting group of people, they're not all just necessarily equal or have equal access to water and sewer and all that, so.
E- exactly, and I think he will discuss that, um he will note where there is water and sewer available right now. The the regulations for multi-unit requires that you hook into public water and sewer, so he'll be able to demonstrate which parcels might be able to take um advantage of this. So.
I guess what we do, if there are some uh landowners that don't have that.
They, then they
That would be approved.
Or they or they could bring water and sewer to their site on their.
But our our next meeting would be just giving input, then we would follow the normal process.
That's correct.
If we decide to, well, he will give us something, we either have to take action on it, either approve it or dis.
If he submits a formal application.
Yes.
Yep.
But we can only act on a formal application.
Yes, just one last question. Um I think the property next to down to Patterson going more to the east and stuff, used to be like a farm, I think, almost. Or maybe it's above it, well, that one, actually, it's the Paulson.
Oh, yes.
Isn't that in that zone too?
Um yeah, I believe it is.
Yeah, I thought there were three landowners left in that zone. I mean, that particular section, I should say.
Along Route one seventeen.
Yes, right.
Right, Paulson property certainly is in there, but there there's a number of pieces. Yep.
I mean, for big ones, it would be Paulson, and then there was another one closer to I ninety five. With maybe access off of the drive going to the medical.
Right, there's, that was a subdivision, there are a couple of empty lots off of Bahina Road, that's right. I see Kevin has his hand up.
I just had one question, so Deb, typically for our text amendments, um what is the process that staff leads us through there? Isn't it um on a yearly basis, is it on when text amendments arise, or is it much more um?
So so there's generally two ways that start reviewing text amendments, there are other commission generated, where you know, staff works on the language and sort of and and discusses it with the commission until everybody is comfortable and then we make an application, or anyone from the public can go ahead and submit an a text amendment application and go from there. Um uh Mr. Sweeney does not want to do that without talking to you first.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and staff would make some input also in comment on his application.
Yeah, yeah, have, I I've only been on four or five years, I I don't know if I've ever seen that before, right, where um it was submitted as an application to create new text amendment, true?
You you're probably right, it's similar to the map amendments that you've seen, a couple of them that have been generated by members of the public.
We get referrals from Stonington that that's their process would be our process.
Exactly, so why would we entertain this as a text amendment as opposed to having him uh request variance?
No.
What would he, he would have to demonstrate a hardship. Not sure exactly what that would be to allow a different use on the property that's not generally allowed throughout the zone. Um use variances are are very difficult for the zoning board of appeals to grant because you're really unlikely to find a hardship other than, but this is what I wanna do. So, so that's why going through the text amendment process, that way you can evaluate whether or not it's a proper use for that zone.
Well, we did have one from uh Three Water Street, right, was a text amendment that was submitted by the applicant. Before he came in with the design.
Yeah, you're right. It was for a height.
No, it was for parking. It was for parking on site. It allowed him to have a larger building.
Got it, yeah, that's right, that's right. Maybe four or five years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it happens. Okay, at any rate, he will be here for another application on the November meeting, which is why he's asking to be placed on that agenda.
Oh, that's why he will, oh, he wanted. He he's not getting his his extra fee for travel time. That's cutting into his income. Oh, so there's something else that he's in for, okay. New business, next uh commissioner reports, reported chair. You attended a housing forum meeting in New Haven last week several staff members and Sue was there, it's interesting on affordable housing.
Very much so. And those presentations are online, right?
See tomorrow, I'll see if they're on and just send you a link.
Some of them are really worthwhile, I think.
And uh I assigned uh the plans today for the uh wooden tap restaurant. And you're gonna give us a summary on little briefing on
Right.
Short-term rental, that's who, that was all I had, does anyone on the commission have any thing else to report?
I do not.
Staff?
So um with regards to the short-term rental decision, um so I've asked, I'd asked the town attorney to take a look at it to see whether or not um your regulations that you recently adopted need to be changed, and at this point, they do not. However, he is watching um some legislation that was proposed and may come up again in the next session regarding um allowing towns to um want to say regulate to license short-term rentals, and if that's something like that passes, he's gonna have to review what your regulations are against new legislation, but uh just basically for case, there's no need to change.
Okay.
Good.
I have a couple of other, a couple of other things, um well, one other thing, you all got the notice for Groton twenty thirty-five um and the initial, basically a launch, a discussion um held at Sutton Park next Tuesday. Four thirty, um there will be food provided, um and we're really hoping to get out like folks in in the neighborhood around there, the Ring Drive neighborhood and and get them involved in the in the update.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
I had one question, Deb.
Yep.
So um I understand, you know, our um town attorney's legal position on short-term rentals, right? And the issue, having worked in a very litigious, very legal federal government structure for the last thirty years, there's always going to be something that could could affect you, right? And it seems as if, you know, we have um done the due diligence and fulfilled the mission of the Planning and Zoning Commission by providing new zoning regulations uh regarding short-term rentals. But I I I haven't seen any pickup by the town council on this at all. I mean, is there an update that even the town attorney um can make a recommendation to um fulfill what we've discussed as far as an ordinance is concerned? That's my question.
Right, I have not seen anything either, um I will, I'll check in with the town manager and see whether or not that is on their list of things to address in the future, I don't know.
Well, yeah, or we could write have correspondence back to to either the town manager or the council.
Yeah, because to chair, we discussed that in some ways, we knew we'd have to hand this off to the town council. So in in our own way, we have handed it off, but it hasn't been as specific as a um planning and zoning to town council handoff, correct?
That's true, but I think the council wanted to wait and take any action until the court case.
Okay, so the court case is done, right? So, yeah, okay, that's great, love to hear back then, thank you very much, Deb.
Yeah, and we did have a meeting a couple of years ago, I think it was that, maybe, or a year or two years ago. With a town manager, myself and the town mayor over this subject and how to proceed with it.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not judging, I'm just observing, seems like it might slow as far as the pickup.
It's gonna be slow, well, it should be, if there's a town ordinance, you don't want it.
No, I get it, there's a process. I don't see the process starting, I guess, that's my issue, don't see it.
Alright, does anyone have anything else to entertain a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second.
Alright.
Yeah, what is the newest iteration of our?
Are we adjourned?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, good night, everyone.